Want to record?
I am.
All right.
Yep. And here's Bob.
Ready.
All right.
Hello, everybody. Hi, Bob.
Good afternoon, evening, whatever it is.
Yeah, I know. And it'll be daylight saving.
Sunday.
On Sunday, yeah. That always makes me sad. I don't like it getting dark at 4:30. So I'll call a meeting to order. Just so everybody knows, we real, all we really have up that of consequence is recognizing EJ and the zoning regulation changes. And we'll go through those. So forgive me, we've had a change. Larry, you're a regular member now?
Yes.
Okay. And so we're seating Alex for Rich?
Alex is a regular meeting.
Alex is regular too.
Yep. We have no alternates. We have no alternates.
No alternates.
Forgive me, Alex. I just don't keep track of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. So Flo, you have the members noted?
Yes.
Paula, any changes to the agenda?
No, there isn't.
Okay, the minutes of September 28th, 2020, any changes, corrections? Anyone? I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as presented.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay.
No, I'm abstaining. I was absent.
Okay. That was Vera.
Yep.
Really? I would have never known.
Okay. Audience of citizens, anything to come up? That's okay, no?
Yeah, we have no audience.
No audience.
Well, okay.
We have a...
Nothing new there.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go back into our public hearing for the proposed regulation changes to 8561 and 65. Paula sent out, Paula, that clean copy that we had talked about that you had come up with. Did you send that out to everybody?
I did. I did.
So there's a home occupation PH32320. Is that the, it's a Word document?
No. I sent out, I sent out a PDF to the members. I had sent you the Word document earlier.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
At the header, it says, based on the 928 discussions. And it's clean.
Do you want to go through that? Paul and I had some discussions and we tried to get this to where we thought the meant, the consensus was from our last meeting, leaving a couple of questions to answer, but I hope we're at a point at the end of the public hearing session today that we can close the public hearing, even if we're not going to vote on it. It's about time. We've kept this public hearing open a long time. And I did, I, we can go through the through the draft, the draft as we have it. Paula?
Thank you for the addition of the, of little tables in each section. That was, we talked about doing that, I think.
That was not, that was not Paula's idea. It was Bob's idea.
Bob's? Okay. I tried to take credit from you, Bob, just.
Right. Paula did all the work, so that's what really counts.
Okay, thank you.
Good gentleman.
So there's, I don't, there's been so many iterations that I've not kept a really clean track of, you know, this once said such and such, and now it says such and such in terms of the iterations among our, these clean drafts. But basically, the things that are the same is 851 covers all the home occupations. And there, the only change here is that item C, inserted item C, because at the last meeting, the members felt that they wouldn't want any of the businesses' home occupations, no matter whether, even if it was the the moderate or the major home occupation to be more than 750 square feet. So I moved that to here. Keep that in mind as we're going through this. I have a feeling that the the major may need to be a little bit bigger than that. That's only, if it's one room, it's only 25 by 30. And maybe that is big enough, but it's, it seems a little bit limiting for the, for the major impact. But at this point, it's, it's a requirement for, for all the, the different three categories. And then under minor, which this is, staff would be approving this, so the Columbia zoning enforcement officer would be approving these, this level. So it's a employees, there's only one employee, five visits per day by customers slash clients in a non-commercial vehicle. Shipping or one shipping or receiving, delivery pickup per day. Two smallish commercial vehicles and no outdoor storage.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that? So I think there's a logical progression here too, from one to the next, to the next.
Question on the, on section C, that it says should not exceed 500, 750 square feet or 49% of total living area. Is it, is that supposed to be whichever is less or, or is if you have?
Well, you can't go over 750.
Right. If you got a 10,000 square foot house, you still can only have 750.
Okay, I wasn't, should that say, or 49% of the total living area, whichever is less?
So if you have a thousand square foot house, can you go to 750 is what you're saying?
You can't.
So it's whichever is less. Should we put that verbiage in, whichever is less?
Well, yeah, I read that and say, oh, if I have a, you know, like a 3,000 square foot house, then I could have 1,500 square feet.
Okay.
I don't read it that way, but I understand you want to clarify it.
Yep.
That's a good idea, clarify it.
It's, it's never, it's never a bad idea to make something more clear. So then, the minor home occupations, I rearranged things a little bit so that right under the table, it lists what that type, you know, examples of that. So this is people who are making things. Also businesses, professionals and personal services and the offices of plumbers, house painters, electricians and other persons who have services are not performed at the dwelling. And then right on the next page, item C is in addition to the homeowner's personal car, SUV or pickup, that they can have two commercial vehicles not to exceed the 11,000. That they need to have, the vehicles need to be registered for that Columbia address so that we'll get the tax dollars. Commercial vehicle shall be either garaged on the premises or screened so as not to be visible when, when standing at ground level from the boundary of any adjacent property, including those properties separated by public or private right of ways. I had that in that same language for the other, for the, the major occupation. And it seemed from the conversation that we had a month ago, it seemed that this was important to have that for all the, all the levels. Sufficient parking not to exceed four parking places. And for the minor, no portion of the home occupation will be conducted outside of the principal or permitted accessory structures. In this one, wait a minute. Yeah, that's right. So we would allow somebody to be in their garage, let's say, or, or a barn space that they had, which is currently what we, we do allow.
Can we, can I ask one question on the minor home?
Of course.
Okay. The outdoor storage, there is none.
Correct.
But yet we allow plumbers and house painters, electricians. I mean, I guess after looking at this earlier, I guess the thought that came to my mind that they might need something like the 200 square foot shed or something to keep stuff in.
Or their garage, then they would be in the next level up.
Okay. Till you're covered under that. All right.
So ready to move on to moderate?
Yes. Ready.
So one additional employee. Double the number of customers or clients. And in the, the first one, and again, the, the minor is staff approval. The first one says that customers or clients in a non-commercial vehicle. This one visits per day by customers or clients, and that could be in a commercial vehicle. The moderate impact home occupation would be approved by the planning and zoning commission after a site plan application.
Let me, can I go back to one point here? So the question you brought up, Tom, had to do with storage in a shed or something?
Yeah.
I thought, Paula, that you and I spoke about this and it was your interpretation. And I was under the impression that under a minor home occupation, if they have a shed on the property, they can put things in there. Outdoor storage refers to a non-contained storage, like something that's exposed outside, outside of a, a building of some sort. So Tom, if they wanted to add a shed, they could do that under their home, the home shed regulations likely. And that, so the outdoor storages, items that are outside of a building.
That's fine.
Okay.
Say, on the, again, second page, if you look at E for the minor, it says, no portion of the hot, home occupation will be conducted outside of the principal or permitted accessory structures. So they couldn't store outside, but, but the moderate would be able to have a small storage area outside. And maybe that's a little too small, but that's again, that's outdoor storage.
Is, is a 10 by 12 shed a permitted accessory structure? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, a moderate could also have, they could have a shed, but they could all, with their equipment in it, but they could also have outdoor storage.
Right.
That had piles of whatever.
So I'm, just want to be clear to, so under minor, they can put the stuff in a shed. If they want it not in the shed, then it has to come through a site plan review. And I think that's a reasonable control. Everyone good? Okay.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, so am I.
So that B, what's, what can be a minor, what qualifies as a minor home occupation is this, is the, sorry, for the moderate, is whatever is listed for a minor, but if you have an additional employee or daily visits, or you need outdoor storage. That the same type of use where it's, it could be a contractor, it could be an accountant, or it could be somebody that's doing crafts or artwork or baked goods.
Okay.
So same caveat for sufficient parking is provided on site, not to exceed four parking places. They're allowed 10, two, two employees and, and 10 customers. But I can't think of a business that would have 10 customers that would all be there all day. So I think that it would be a, an accountant is going to have somebody coming in and then going out. I think the four parking places would still be appropriate.
Everyone good with that?
Ready to move on to major?
Major, I am. Everyone good?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the major is special permit so that the abutting, or excuse me, that the property owners within 200 feet would get a notice that there was a, a public hearing and would get a copy of the, the application would be available to them, et cetera. So this ups the employees to four. Visits per day by customers or shipping, receiving trucks, whatever, in and out 20 per day. And that's visits, so it would be 40 trips, 20 in, 20 out would be the maximum. The same. Sure.
On the, on the letter A, where you're citing the numbers in all the other bullets, whether it be BC, you have the, the numeral in parentheses, should we do that with A also?
I'm not sure it's needed. People read tables a little differently than they do text.
Okay.
I thought of living, leaving it out of the text actually, but so the same 11,000 gross vehicle weight is two, but they can also have a pickup or a walk-in van not in excess of 14,000. And that's only one. And outdoor storage is 200 square feet, which, because this is major, that may need to be a little bit larger. Or it could be something that'd be, I was just thinking out, my brain was thinking, I was going to say thinking out loud, but the commission could, it could be something that'd be determined by the commission, but then it, that gets tricky because when somebody wants something in excess of what you would normally think of as a reasonable amount, it, it, it sometimes can get difficult with the, during a public hearing with an applicant, trying to figure out exactly how many square feet it should be. after the table, there's the language which we were talking about at the last meeting of some sort of separation. These numbers are in here as placeholders. So that the driveways is separated at least 50 feet from, from the abutting properties and the minimum lot areas, not less than five acres, as placeholders. And the vehicle parking, seriously separated from all abutting property lines by a minimum of 100 feet. Can have storage outside. And just the same language that beefs up the, the screening that you might need to have.
Like, let me go back to the driveway separation. Most rear lots have an access strip which is, would not permit this. Is that what our goal is here? To not allow this to occur on a rear lot? Because these are substantial separations if you go to the 100 foot. But if the driveway has to be separated from a abutting properties by 50 feet, you need 100 foot, 115 foot wide access strip just to get your driveway in. I don't think that was our intention when we started down this path, was it? Any thoughts?
I agree, Rick. I agree, Rick. It was not our intention to limit or preclude rear lots or flag lots from any of these types of things.
I think this verbiage does though.
It would, it would, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the driveway separation.
So should that section, that part be taken out?
Can we put excluding driveways?
Or just cross that part of the sentence out?
Well, yeah, there's two, two numbers there, Tom. There's a 50 foot separation from abutting driveways, the driveway separation from abutting properties.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know that I would think that it's a good thing to get into the driveway has to be 50 feet from other structures because that's, that's problematic too, especially because we have limited numbers of rear lots that are created newly. I mean, some, the old, old ones are all over the place.
Yeah, but it, but it says activity areas. I mean, you could drive down a 200 foot driveway before you get to an activity area.
Or as long, as long as you keep the parking 100 feet from the property line, I mean, that's, that solves that issue.
Right. I mean, if you drive down and then you got a parking area.
You know, no, I, I'm not questioning the 100 foot thing. I think that's okay. I mean, if, if somebody wants to be one step away from commercial use on a residential property, I think reasonable buffers should be in place. And we can revisit these numbers in the future if they don't seem to apply to a lot of circumstances. It's the 50 foot, the driveway being 50 feet from abutting properties eliminates flag lots. And I don't think that was the intention. So just eliminating that portion of it, just line out.
The access, that the middle.
The reference to the access drive.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I think that the thing that's more important, particularly to the driveway and, and abutting driveways, abutting buildings, is the number of trips you're doing per day.
Right.
40 trips per day.
That seems high to me.
Yeah. Well, one other thing too. The, this is a public hearing, so the neighbors, if there is a tight area and somebody's, wants to go in and out with a lot of trucks or, or whatever, 20 trips, 20 visits, which is 40 trips, then the neighbors would speak up and then the commission would have to weigh that.
Yeah, because when we, when we talked the last time and Rich, Rich made the point of, you know, you could have kids and, you know, three or four personal vehicles. But this isn't saying that, that's saying customers.
Yes, this is all.
Now you're saying 40 visits per day by customers, which is a whole game to the family.
Trips, 40 trips, 20 times in and 20 times out.
That's a lot.
Probably some business in Columbia that don't even get that kind of traffic.
I know.
Yeah, no kidding.
So basically.
That seems high, that's all.
Let me play devil's advocate with this number as long as we're on it. So what we're saying is you get unlimited number of ins and outs with your
Family.
Your, well, no, with your vehicles for the business owned by the vehicles. This is just by the customers.
Right.
So you could have a truck depot being operated out of there.
The commission would have to approve it, which I don't think the commission would. We have, we, we have a truck depot is something that's, is allowed in our regulation. When you've got something that's listed as a, as a use, like a truck depot or distribution center, that, I don't see how that would ever qualify as a home occupation, especially one in our own regulations. We, we allow, allow that only if the property abuts a state road. So I, so I guess off, off of Route 6, you'd be able to maybe.
Let's go back to the, the 20 number. Are we good with that? Or would you like to reduce it? Any thoughts?
I think it should be 10.
Let's, can I get, just get everyone's perspective on it? I'd love to hear.
I think it's a little high.
Down.
Okay. Let, let's, let's make it, let's make it 15. Would that be, it's still, because this is still a special permit, or would you rather have it at 10? Everyone, 10?
I think you started at 10 because if you say 15, you're encouraging people to push that number. And then you're going to be hard pressed to turn it down unless somebody objects to it.
Okay. Everybody? Larry, Alex, we want to go to 10? Okay, let's change that to 10. Okay?
Yep.
I, I think, you know, we don't want to lose sight of, there's a, there's a, there's a difference between home use and commercial use. And what we're doing is allowing some home use with some businesses. It's not commercial.
Correct.
And I think the more visits we get by commercial or tenants or, or customers or whatever you want to call it, then it's really weighing in more on the commercial side. Again, look at your house. Do you want your neighbor to have 20 trucks a day coming to visit? I don't think so, you know?
And, and, and I know that, and in my perspective, I, I know that this code, you know, the virus thing has changed things. There's probably going to be more people doing occupations from home. But that's still a lot of trips in a residential area.
Okay, I think we're all on the same page then. 10, we'll make that number 10. Okay. 200 feet of outside storage. Everyone good with that number? An expansion, assuming that this, these are larger lots that would accommodate these 100 foot setbacks. I, I'm comfortable with that.
Because you're five acres plus, right?
Yeah, yeah.
10 rather. Oh, 11 is fine. Sorry. I'll wake up. No, it says five acres under B.
Yes, it's five acres.
Okay. But 10 trips, got it.
10 trips, yep.
That, that in itself is limiting to a certain degree, so, okay. All right, we're good, we're good on all the provisions under 854, under the major? We all good? Okay, so we'll move to the sign portion.
Well, let's back up one more. The prohibited home occupations. We, in our current regulations, we have vehicle storage, salvage and repair. After some discussions at one of our meetings over the last few months, we inserted dog boarding and or daycare as, as not a home occupation. Just because it, they bark. It's too, too disruptive to a neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that people were aware that that's there.
What was the first one, Paula?
Vehicle storage, salvage or repair, which we've had in our
Shop.
Yeah, an auto, auto repair shop, which has been in our, our current reg, home occupation regs for a long time.
Okay. We're good there?
Yep.
Now, and the, the next is the sign regulations. If you look at, we, we cover our signs in section 62, and the one that's for residential district is 62.5. And what we've been doing, the, the top part of that table, we've, we have been saying approved home occupations, daycare centers, B and Bs, riding arenas, commercial horse operations. They would be allowed to have one, the maximum number of signs, one freestanding sign that's maximum areas four square feet, so it's fairly small and can be six feet high. And maximum number of signs is one wall sign and maximum area is two square feet. And that wall sign would be located at the business entryway. So after, what, what the commission, sometime over the summer, the commission had set slightly different numbers. So what this will do is just take that table and it adds a line that's approved home occupations and makes that a separate line that has one freestanding sign. The members had talked about six square feet, but only four feet high and at the driveway entry. So.
It works for me.
Yeah, these all make sense. I like this.
Yeah, two by three, three by two, that's fine.
And four, four feet is pretty low.
Yep. Not if you're an ant.
No. I mean, it's, it's, it's intended, most home occupations.
Sorry.
If, you're only going to need that sign if you're expecting customers or clients or visitors. So it's, it's just wayfinding. So I think it's, I think it's appropriate to be fairly small.
Yeah. You're not doing transient customers here. You're not trying to attract people that are zooming by at 40 miles an hour.
Right.
You're, you're right, Paul. It's wayfinding. They're going, it's just to identify where the entrance to the
Right, right. Yeah.
And most, most of these are, it's a little different than going to a shopping center and needing signs to, to see what the businesses are. Especially small businesses are advertising on Facebook and, and using outreach, digital outreach and not, they put an ad in the paper, you know?
You know, even most of the signs around town that have, you know, I, I'm thinking of people who have maple syrup or, you know, vegetable, those signs are all kind of small around town. Nobody, nobody seems to be abusing that.
Right, right. This makes this, this makes the home occupation signs a little bit larger than the, I moved, I rearranged my papers. Wait a minute. All right. So this makes it a little bit, little bit larger than what they could have done under the existing regulations. Makes it larger and shorter.
Yeah, six square feet is fine.
Okay. It's not very big.
No.
Alrighty.
You okay with that, Rick? Or that?
I am.
Cool.
Okay. So we also have here section 61 and section 65 that are a separate document.
Well, it's, it's the, it's part of the, the original packet from the, for the public hearing.
I'd, I'd like to close the public hearing tonight, so I'd like to just, if we need to do a last real quick run through these to make sure there's nothing that anyone wants to bring up.
I'm fine.
Paula, do we, does anyone want to go through these other ones? Because we've gone through these before.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm fine.
We good?
Yes.
Are we ready to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the, what else do I have to say? I don't have this stuff in front of me.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, close the public hearing.
I'll, I'll second that.
That was Bob.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
Yay!
It's been, you know, you know something, we put a lot of time into this.
We did good with it.
But, but I think we, we made them easier to understand and more simple.
Yes, I agree.
It took a lot of time to make them more simple, that's the best thing we could have done.
Yep.
Agreed. I think you'd be happy with those, too.
With that, we'll go to item six, unfinished business. With the, the changes that we made this evening, and I can read them back to you, Paula, I think, I would feel very comfortable voting on the regulations this evening, are all of you?
Yes.
Let me read back the changes and make sure.
Let me back, let me interrupt for a second. We, we technically, and I don't think we need to actually do this, but technically we need to note the changes from what was published for the March twenty-third hearing.
Do you want to clean it up for our next meeting then? Because I, I made, I made notations as to what we changed from.
For tonight, yes, yeah, no, I have, I have that, too. It's, I think you can, I think you could go ahead and approve it, but I would just phrase it as as revised during the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, without the specifics listed?
I don't, it would take me a month to get all the specifics listed.
Okay, then why don't we?
Better to make the revisions and then vote on it at the next meeting on it for a very.
No, because it, because of the public hearing, the, the document that went out at the public hearing said one thing.
Yeah, exactly. What we're approving is something that is different than when out, went out of the public hearing, so.
Not, not drastically different, honestly.
It is different, it is.
Yes, yes, it is, but it is, and I went through to make sure, because I did the little test of, is this something that I felt that were changes from what went out? And I, in terms of what's in eight, just on the home occupation, what's in eight, five, one, the, that's all the same as it was that went out in terms of substance. Some of the language changed a little bit, but in terms of substance, the minor home occupation, we increased the number of vehicles by one and we allowed in, in the, the direction that the commission is going in is to increase visitors over the original application. The.
You know, I don't think we need to go through all of them, but, but let me, let me, I, I feel the same way Bob does in that I'd be more comfortable seeing the finished regulation printed up in its finished form for all three parts that we did and so we can say that we're approving these and these are as revised and do that at our next meeting.
Well, what, okay, you certainly can, but if, the section sixty-one is the same as what was presented at the public hearing. Section sixty-five is the same as what was presented to the hearing. It's only the home occupation.
Understood.
But I, and I don't, what I, what I was trying to say was, I don't think the changes rise to the level of needing, needing another public hearing on them. I think it's all within the scope of what was originally presented back in March.
I don't think one disagrees with you on that. So the question is the form of how we're going to do this. And I, I'd be comfortable voting on them tonight, but I'd rather note the specific changes we made in the draft that we worked on tonight. But you brought up the point that there were a lot of prior changes and you would rather have us just say as changed. And I would, I would like to reference the specific changes that we made this evening from the most recently edited copy. So it's a matter of you thinking that we should do it differently.
I do.
From a procedural standpoint, and if, if you are not comfortable with us noting these specific things, I would rather see the final document.
Well, that, if you're going to mention all the changes, we need to go back to the changes that we made in, in April and May and June, because we've made lots of different changes on it.
Well, we have them all here, so we have that document here, that's the change document.
No, we, well, I'm saying we've, we have a final document. I, I think you're fine to just say as, as revised tonight.
Paula, I, you say we're fine, and I'm saying what I would like to do is I would like to say we are going to adopt the changes for sixty-one and sixty-five as presented and eight, five as presented this evening.
Okay, all right.
With the following changes.
Okay, I got you, I got you, all right.
So if we can do it where we notate verbally what the changes are to the document that was presented this evening, I think that's a perfectly good form. I don't, I don't want to just say a blanket with changes unless we notate what is different in the printed form that we received this evening.
Yep, I, I wasn't thinking that way. I, that's, that works for me. I, the changes that I saw is eight, five, one, C, we added whichever is less at the end. On eight, five, four, B, we deleted that section.
On the driveway.
On the driveway, and in the table in eight, five, four, A, we reduced the visits by customer shipping, et cetera, to ten. Did I get them all?
Yes.
Okay.
So the next meeting, we will have a clean version given to us that we can vote on.
I, I'm comfortable voting this tonight if all of you are, because there's only those three changes noted from the presented document this evening. So I'd love to put this behind us, quite frankly.
Let's do it.
Look, look, why don't I make the motion? If, and just listen carefully and correct me, please, if I've gone in the wrong direction. So I make a motion, did you have a sample motion presented for this?
No, I didn't, I, I forgot, sorry.
Okay, let, let me just say this, for example, it's not the official motion. I'd make a motion that we would approve the proposed zoning regulation revisions to section eight point five, six point sixty-one and sixty-five as presented, including the section eight point five as presented in its most recent form at the meeting, at the public hearing this evening, with the following modifications to that document that we, for eight, eight, one, C, eight, five, one, C, we add the caveat whichever is less with regard to the square footage percentage or, square footage or percentage. Item eight, five, four, we delete the reference to the setbacks for driveways. And under eight, five, four, A, we change that number to be ten visits. I think that describes it accurately. So now I'll make that motion in that way. That would need a second.
Second.
You were first. Any discussion of this? Again, the, the three changes from the draft of eight point five are adding the lesser of on eight, five, one, C. Under eight, five, four, B, we're going to eliminate the driveway fifty-foot setback portion. And under eight, five, four, A, we're going to go to ten maximum visits based on our preferences. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Extensions? Nays? That's unanimous then, thank you.
Cool, done.
Congratulations. I, I'm very pleased with where, where you've come for the, the home occupations. I think that is a, a very good regulation, thank you.
No, thank you, Paula. It's become very clear and easy to understand and hopefully everything can be that, that way someday.
Started by the, smart, started by the subcommittee, I might add.
Yes, a couple of years ago.
Under the suggested list of zoning changes, any?
We had new business, don't skip over that important new business.
Oh, schedule, schedule.
It's, it's, this is an interesting year because we usually run into quite a few Mondays, second Mondays that happen to be a holiday. This year, we're, this next year, we're only going to hit it once. So does everything look okay that we're going to continue on the second and fourth Monday of each month?
Yep.
Yes, it does.
You don't need to vote on it, you can just concur.
Amen.
We all good? Okay, we're all, we're all good.
Okay.
The, the future zoning changes, we've got a couple minutes and we can keep the meeting under an hour, so.
We're at number eight. We got, we got the thing for Ernie, too, so.
Yes, we do.
Yep, yep. So the suggested zoning changes, that item one, A, on our table is complete, because we just did it, thank you very much. We still have the nutrient allocation zoning regulations, twenty-one, four, and the spreadsheet, which, the way we revised, we have revised the spreadsheet, it seems to be a staff implementation type process. We did not change the process, we just added a few items based on the tables that we have from, I lost his name, the, the.
Courtman.
Courtman. So we just, we just made it, so we currently have on our spreadsheet five or six land covers examples with, and so we've increased that so that it makes a little bit more sense and it's easier for people because they don't have to figure out, is this, this kind or is it of that kind? It's a little clearer, but we.
I'd, is it a matter of form for something like this? I would hope that we don't have to vote on changes administratively to a spreadsheet like that, but I would just like to be notified and sent a copy of it so we can see what the changes are so that we can weigh in with our perspective if we need to.
We've been, we, we were testing it for a while and it, and the biggest change to the spreadsheet is, as you guys probably know, I'm a, an Excel geek and the spreadsheet is in Excel. So I, I set it up so it did things more automatically so that a layperson would be able to measure their yard and put some numbers in and then play around with it to see, oh, well, if I, if I got rid of a little less of my driveway, then it would work. And it's, so, so that the layperson would, would be able to, to use it. And Connie has been using it on her end, the CEO, and she loves it because it, it's, you don't have to, the old version, you had to pull out a calculator and do calculations before you could put it into the spreadsheet. So this is just taking that step out. So that's been, that's been working well. And I think, I will certainly send out a, a sample to the, to the members.
Yeah, so we really don't need to do anything here.
Not on that, no, but we've, the, the actual regulations for twenty-one, four, I worked on revising the regulations with, and I don't have copies with me here, with John Valenti, who is the guru in terms of wetlands and understanding sheet flow and better uses for this, that and the other. And I don't, I don't know if you guys feel that we should get courtmen involved or if you'd be comfortable with just starting to work on, on that without, just by at least taking a look at it and see where we are with it. I can get copies to you. One of the things that the commission had wanted to do, which is incorporated in the, the draft, is allow people a one-time self-mitigating, which staff approves, but it, instead of having to redo the, the full nutrient allocation spreadsheet for their property, which, the way it's, the language is today, is if you're putting up a little teeny-tiny, you know, covering over your front door, which this is actually a true story, you have to recalculate because you've increased your, your coverage, you have to calculate, recalculate the whole property and you have to make it at least ten percent better than it currently is. So one of the things, and this is only if you're in the watershed, which is probably a third of the properties or a quarter of the properties in town. The commission had said that, you know, we'd like people to have like a one-time shot where the staff can just go in and say, okay, you're going to put up a shed, if you mitigate the shed, you're okay. You don't have to go through the, the process of change, making big changes in the, the rest of your, your property. So one timer. So that's in there. And it's just, a lot of the other changes in there are just making it a little bit easier to read, organizing it a little different so it, the process language flows a little bit better. So, but, you know, that's, I have not looked at it in probably two years, but the draft's been ready for quite a while. We.
I've got a couple of questions, Paula.
Yeah.
One, you said you added a few items to the nutrient allocation plan, the, the calculation items?
The spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yep.
So those obviously have some kind of coefficients that are associated with.
Yes, yes, they do.
Who, who established the coefficients?
They're from courtman.
Okay, good. I, once, I think, I think it's important that once we decide what this is going, the final version of this is going to be, I think courtman should review it.
The spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Since it was probably his idea at the very beginning. Then the other thing is on this one-time exclusion, does this go owner by owner or is it property by property?
It'd be property by property.
I could, I could get a one-time exemption and then next year I sell my house and then the next guy gets a one-year exemption?
It's all based on the property.
Okay. But by property?
Correct.
Okay. I think there should be a limit to that, there should be a, like a square foot limit?
There is.
Feet could be done as a one-time exemption.
Yes, I, it's either one, it's either one hundred, I have not read this in years, the draft, because it's, and that's not on the, that's not on the spreadsheet, that's on the, the section twenty-one, four.
Yeah, let's, let's not get into that in any.
Yeah, it's either one hundred or one twenty, I don't remember, Bob, but I would just like us to, if you guys want to move forward with it, I would like us to start actually moving forward with it.
It's probably time to address that and I think we have the time to do it. So let's get into the nutrient allocation implementation and possible methods to make it reasonable for somebody to make some minor improvements to their property without having to go through a hellacious process. And, and so in some cases, I'll, let me use an example, my home, which, you know, four years ago I went through this massive renovation, I did everything I could to get the net ten percent reduction because I wasn't going to meet the target numbers for nutrient allocation. But let's say I want to add twenty square feet of deck area because I want to add a staircase from one place to another. I think it's reasonable to say, okay, you do it, but you have to directly offset that with mitigation elsewhere on the property and do a one-for-one for minor changes, whether it's, you know, we don't require it for a shed, but if you had a, you know, a, a covering to an entryway, come up with some way that staff can approve a one-to-one mitigation, you know? You increased the, the nutrient allocation value over here, you have to have a direct reduction elsewhere. If you've already gone through the process of. If you've already gone through the process of mitigating to the, to, on a, on a major project. So if we're in agreement in that concept, I can talk offline with Paula on a way to get there. And then we can present something that kind of. Thought out before it gets to the commission.
Connie, John Valenti and I have worked on it for quite a while. And what we came up with, and it was, we, Rick, you were involved in the conversations as well. As were other commission members at meetings. It's basically if you, one time, you'd be able to put in a shed. And I honestly don't remember if it's a hundred square feet or a hundred and twenty square feet, but you could put in a shed and self, self-mediate. I was gonna say self-medicate, self-mediate the.
Remediate.
The, the, but do it just for that one project so that you'd have on, around the shed, you would put a gravel. That, that John calculated how deep it needed to be and how wide it would be so that the runoff from the roof would, would be mitigated. So it's.
And I'd suggest that we don't say it's a one-time thing, but there's a limitation on the, how frequently it could be and what percentage of the property. Because let's say you do a shed this year and in three years you want to put a staircase somewhere. To make somebody go back to the well for those very minor things in relation to the total scope of, of the structure that's on the property. We, we can get into that later. I mean, we're going to probably agree and disagree on lots of things. But let's, well, let's work through it, Paula. I'll work with you to come up with something that's a draft, at least that we can start to tear apart.
Well, it's, it, we have, we have a draft. I will, I will send you the draft. Yeah, we have a draft.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to see a copy of the draft? Just put your two cents in.
Yep. I'll send it to everybody. I'll send it to everybody.
Okay. All right. That's good. So going through the, the rest of the list here, next one up is Columbia Lake Watershed Possible Second Overlay. We, you know, we can do some house cleaning in the spreadsheet and do that and. Probably that's the next big thing. Just, I don't want to say too much right now, but I've spoken with a lot of people that are involved with Camp Astewama. And I think that the, the church, church's perspective on it, it has been vacillating on. On their view of the camp. And right now it doesn't, I don't think we face a lot of pressure from them. That they might want to have to move on from ownership of the camp. But that said, I think we should make this a fairly high priority to try and sort out what we want to do in the lake watershed. And, and the camp being a large part of the, the watershed that would be affected by any regulation changes. So we probably do better, best to get it like a study group or a subcommittee of two or three people. That want to work on conceptualizing a direction, then come back to the commission. Express what that direction thought is and then go back out and come, come back with a little more detail. I'm kind of throwing that out as an idea that I'm one, I'm hoping for some feedback from all of you about. I would certainly want to work on that.
And I think you should.
And, you know, I, anybody that wants to weigh in on it, we'll, we'll bring this up at, at the next meeting. And maybe get that going as a formal process. If you're all in agreement that that's how we should approach it. You know how I like to do this. I, I'll put my ideas out there, then I back away a little bit and I look for a consensus. As, as to a way to proceed from all of you, because everyone has strong views on this and I. I want, you know, we've done really well by almost completely operating by consensus for some time now. We rarely have something that we don't all agree on. Okay? My, that makes me just appreciate the way we work with each other and, you know, we can disagree in the discussion then at the end. Ultimately, I think we get the best result because everybody's perspective has fed into the final result.
I agree.
Subdivision regulations are after that. Let's leave them after that because I think the watershed needs some attention right now. We may decide to work on the watershed for a while and then put it down to a lower, lower level, but for right now, I don't want to do that.
That's gonna take a while.
Accessory structures, hoop houses, you know, there's, there's other things on here. Just read them. But I think focusing on the watershed is, is the most productive first thing that we could do right now. And once we get into it, we may decide to change our perspective on the timing, but right now it, it seems the most important next task. And I had brought something up that isn't really on the list. And I, I won't really, I'm going to back away from bringing this up. Paula doesn't agree with me. You know, I, I do a lot of work in my, my professional life with a, a home builder. Who's asked that we go to a forty-foot allowance in the non-watershed areas for new home building. Because if you have a twenty-eight-foot deep house, you know, a forty-by-twenty-foot. A forty-by-twenty-eight-foot footprint with a twelve-twelve pitch roof and a sloping rear yard, you can't do a twelve-twelve pitch roof. And that's Blanchard, that's our Blanchard that I work with. I do a lot of work. And I have, I would love to hear kind of offline from all of you if you think I should back away from bringing this up. Or if you think the better form, if they want to pursue it, is for them to propose a regulation change and pay the fee. I don't want to do anything that smacks of favoritism. I don't disagree that there are times when that doesn't work, but I, if it's going to get on our agenda, I want everybody. I want to, I want to hear from each of you about what you feel my role would be, because as soon as it gets on the agenda, I'm going to recuse myself. I feel I have too much of a conflict there.
And it is. It is on the list of suggested zone changes. It's towards the bottom. It's the fourth lineup from the bottom, maximum height for slope lots.
Okay.
You had asked me to put it on there when, when.
Okay.
He brought, he had brought it up.
Looked for the number forty and didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was a specific request because it's allowed in other towns. So I, that's pretty low on the priority list. And if we get to, get to there, I want to talk to you about the potential for a conflict with me and, and get your perspective. I mean, I feel I can be open-minded about it, but ultimately, I'm going to defer to what everybody's perspective is on that.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not just knowing I don't have a conflict. It's the, the appearance of a conflict that I don't want to have out there.
Gotcha.
Okay. Everyone good with this list?
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
I will get out the, the nutrient allocation spreadsheet and the revised twenty-one-four to folks this week.
Okay. So next up is EJ. He's not here. I didn't arrange to have him on the phone or anything for this evening, but you all got a copy of this. The frame certificate that I asked Steve Everett to generate. Just to say thank you for all of the years, eighteen years he's worked on the commission. And, you know, we've lost something with him not being on the commission. His background in the construction trade. I think added a great deal of practical world. Real-world perspective, just like Bob in so many ways, all of us, you know, every, we each have our own. Background. EJ added something special and I just, I. Even though he beat me in an election, I just still love him.
Me too.
So my point is, I, I called him and spent quite a bit of time with him on the phone this week. And I said, you just realize how much we miss you and we appreciate what you've, you've contributed over time. And I, I think he was surprised that I called to express that, but. He shouldn't be because what he, what he contributed was substantial and, and he's EJ. We love him, you know?
Good guy.
Yeah, he's a great guy. So I think he felt. If it, I know he feels appreciated and that was the most important thing. And he promised when all the craziness is past, we're going to get him at a meeting, even if it's a year from now. And we're gonna give him, stand up with him in the same room and give him a hand. So, thank you, EJ.
Good.
Go ahead, Tom.
Now, I'm just wondering if we should do it at the beginning of our next meeting, just, you know, so we.
Try and get him on the phone?
Yeah, do it at seven o'clock.
All right, let's try and do that. I'm gonna, our next meeting is, what's the date of that? I'm gonna be, I'm gonna put it on my calendar right now. Our next meeting would be on the ninth.
That sound good to everybody?
November ninth, yes.
So I'm putting call EJ to line up for meeting.
Not that we can't do the other two, but.
Okay. You know, maybe we'll surprise you and he'll be on Zoom.
Somebody needs to bring him a computer. Or a, or a cellphone that has a video on it.
He could come to, you know, your house, Rick, or my house. I don't care. We could do it that way.
Yeah, I'll leave him out on the porch. How's that?
Yeah, it depends on the weather.
So Flo will take the certificate over to him, deliver that and. Let him know some of the words that you said tonight, which would, I think will be nice and how much we all miss him.
He called, always called me kid.
Well, you are.
It's good to feel young. You know, I do feel young. Thank goodness. That said, thank you again, EJ. Anything else anyone wants to bring up? Open discussion, audience of citizens. Paula, anything else you feel we need to bring up tonight?
No.
Hello?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
You didn't make eight o'clock, eight oh-three.